Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission's regular meeting for January 27, 2025. This time we'll move to roll call. Commissioner Rasmussen.
Commissioner Bott.
Here.
Commissioner Britton.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Chair Fraser.
Here.
Commissioner Knabel.
Here.
Commissioner Rasmussen, here. Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve from Commissioner Britton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Stevens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Motion carries seven zero. Item four tonight is open forum. This is a chance for anyone who's here in the audience tonight to speak to the council or speak to the commission on something that is not on tonight's agenda. So we will have separate sessions on the mining permit as well as lockridge. But if there's something that is not one of those two things that you'd like to address the commission on, now is your chance to do so. So I will open open forum if anyone would like to step to the podium. All right. Seeing none, we will close open forum. Item five is chair's explanation of the hearing process. The Planning Commission is a volunteer advisory group to the city council. One of the one of the commission's functions is to hold public hearings and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. The purpose of these public hearings is to provide an opportunity for each applicant and citizens to present information, ask questions, and express opinions. Since these proceedings are televised and recorded for the public record, anyone wishing to speak must step up to the podium and give their name and address before addressing the commission. Staff reports are prepared and provided to the applicant and planning commission in advance of the meeting. The first step in the hearing will be for staff to present a summary of the report. The applicant will then have the opportunity to briefly explain the proposal and provide additional information or comment. Anyone wanting to speak in favor or against the proposal will then be heard. Upon completion of the testimony, the hearing will be closed to public comment. The planning commission will then discuss and act on the matter. Two complete agenda packets are available for viewing on the back table. Please do not remove those items. The city council will act on these items at their meeting on Wednesday, February 19, 2025, which starts at 7:00 PM. With that, we will move to item six. Six A is the Holcombe Mining Permit, MP 2025-001, with Riley Rooney presenting.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Before you this evening is the application for the annual mining permit for wholesome MWR. So I just want to note before we get into everything, this application is separate from the ongoing EIS that's happening for wholesome on Lower Gray Cloud Island. As you can see before you, the facility is located at 11250 Gray Cloud Trail and is highlighted in red on the screen before you. So in 2024, wholesome mined approximately 510,000 tons of aggregate materials on the island. Once mined, the facility processes, washes, screens, and loads those materials onto barges and trucks to be transferred out to the community. I should note that most of these materials are being loaded onto barges rather than the trucks. Less than 10,000 tons were hauled via truck. The rest were taken up to St. Paul via barge and then distributed from there. Our Public Safety Department did not report any noise complaints in this previous year. And then with that, I'll bring you to the 2025 proposed operations. So they're proposing to continue operations for another three to four years. The mining and processing is supposed to it's estimated total between 700 and 725,000 tons this year. The facility is also working towards reclamation efforts. Excuse me. This facility has previously done work to reestablish the previously mined areas. This year, they are planning to continue to reestablish the oak savanna and prairie areas in the northwestern portion of the site. This is also this also includes removal of non-native plant species and trees, as well as some maintenance burns. With that, the recommendation is before you. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, as well as someone on behalf of wholesome. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, thank you. This time, if the applicant would like to add anything?
Good evening, Chairman Fraser and members of the planning commission. I'm Patty Bessler with wholesome MWR, 2815 Dodd Road, Eagan, Minnesota. Riley summed up our application very well. It's status quo, operating as we have for the last many, many years. In 2023, we implemented suction dredge. It's fully electric where we're trying to get overburden off a previously mined area that was mined like in the 50s, 60s, and we didn't have the capabilities at that time with the suction dredge with the clamshell dredge that we have now. So we're trying to go back, get that overburden and excess sand off. We're pushing it to other parts of the previously mined areas that we'll never go back to. Our reclamation plan is, you know, we are meeting the landowners grades that they want for the final for when they someday go to develop that property. The work that we're doing with Great River Greening, where we're reestablishing oak savanna areas and taking out invasive buckthorn and putting in oak plantings, that is actually part of the city agreed to that back in 2010, in lieu of us planting many, many trees down there that were not surviving because of dry conditions when we go through droughts and whatnot. So in lieu of planting trees every single year, we are reestablishing big oak savannas right now. There was some on the eastern side that we're working on and then along the water area in the area where we cannot ever mine because of historical significance. There is beautiful area down there, but it's being overtaken by buckthorn. So we're working in there this year to get some of that buckthorn out again. We didn't work in there previously, but we're going back to that area now too. So I am here to answer any questions. I also have our operations manager, Michael Murphy, if you have any operation questions. But pretty much we're what we've been doing for many years now. We're trying to eke every piece of sand and gravel out of that site, which is the purpose of the suction dredge.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Emily, is this a public hearing? I remember in the past, and I don't know if I'm remembering correctly, if the mining permit is a public hearing or not.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, it's technically not a public hearing. However, the commission does need to take a vote.
All right. Excellent. All right. With the the presentation by staff as well as the applicant, is there any further discussion by commission on the motion on the proposal? Commissioner Rasmussen.
Just glad to see your operations going as planned. It looks like you're increasing production and reclamation is appreciated. So thank you for your partnership. It's always nice to see things going well down there.
Commissioner Fisher.
I was just gonna say, on the same lines of that, it sounds like everything's going well. The same status quo for the several of these renewals I've seen. I like that you're working on the invasive species and trying to really protect the the nature that's down there too, so.
Any further comment, discussion? Otherwise, I look for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the mining permit, subject to stipulations. Are there stipulations in here? Yes, stipulations in the staff report.
All right. I have a motion to approve the permit, subject to the stipulations in the staff report from Commissioner Fisher. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner Knabel. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say no. Motion carries seven zero. This time, we'll move on to item six B, Lockridge, cases CZA 2025-004 and PP 2025-004, with I'm gonna butcher your last name. I apologize.
Give it a try.
Sam Piret.
It is Samantha Pirit.
Pirit.
Sam Pirit is fine.
All right. Sam Pirit presenting.
Thank you. Yes, Sam Samantha Pirit, senior planner here. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Let's see here. There we go. Pulte Homes of Minnesota has applied for a preliminary plat and zoning amendment for their proposed Lockridge subdivision. The request is to change the zoning from ag to agriculture to R4 transitional residential on three parcels totaling 55 acres and also a preliminary plat for a residential subdivision to be called the Lockridge subdivision, consisting of 99 single-family homes and 84 townhome lots. Those townhomes would be constructed in groups of four and six units that would be side by side. The 52 acres of land located is located south of the city of Woodbury border, west of Jamaica Avenue, and north of the waters at Michael's Point Development. You will note in your packet that outlots A and B of the Waters at Michael's Point are included on preliminary plat documents. That is because there is a proposed recreational trail going around Lake Robert, that wetland down in the southern part of the property. Outlot A of the Waters at Michael's Point was always intended to be dedicated to the city when the waters was plotted back in 2011 in anticipation of further development on these parcels to the north that we're talking about tonight. Multiple development and plat proposals have been brought forward to this commission and the council in the past for development on these on this land. Challenges have included the presence of bedrock and the Lake Robert wetland, all of which are restricting the buildable area here. The rezoning of the land from ag 2 to R4 is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The proposed land use in the comprehensive plan is low-density residential and parks and open space. Low-density residential allows for two to four units per acre of density, and the applicant is proposing 2.92 units per acre. The green areas on the land use plan in front of you are considered are areas for parks and open space, and that it will be achieved using that trail that goes around Lake Robert. The two outlots in the Waters at Michael's Point development that I've discussed are currently zoned R3, single-family residential. However, these two parcels are not proposed to be rezoned as part of this request. These are just included as noted. This is where the proposed trail will be going around the lake. The R4 district is intended to provide areas that allow diverse housing products, such as the townhomes and single-family dwellings that we're seeing here in this proposal. All right. So the preliminary plat that was submitted, as mentioned, is for 99 single-family lots and 84 townhome lots. The applicant has not requested a planned unit development. They will follow all R4 zoning standards. And Pulte Homes of Minnesota is proposing to construct the homes north of the Ravine Parkway extension, which would be, oops, up here. And then Rachel Development will be retaining the lots that would be on the south side of Ravine Parkway here, with a builder yet to be determined for those lots. Three stormwater ponds have been proposed within this development. Additional stormwater ponding has been proposed behind lots 22 and 23 of Block 4, as well as in the northwest corner of the property. Staff has requested that those areas also be named as outlots and also deeded to the city for stormwater purposes. All right, getting into transportation here, the property will or the site will be accessed from Jamaica Avenue to the east onto the new segment of Ravine Parkway. Jamaica Avenue was designed for approximately 15,000 vehicles per day. Currently, there are approximately 4,100 trips taken on Jamaica Avenue daily. With the addition of the Lockridge development, it would be anticipated an additional about 1,500 trips would be seen per day. Adding the 4,100 plus 1,500 trips per day would result in traffic levels still well under that 15,000 number that the road was designed to accommodate. You will also see on the screen before you a very preliminary conceptual design of a roundabout at the intersection of Jamaica and Military Road in the northeast corner of the project. This is the reason why there was quite a bit of area left in that northeast corner of the project, is to accommodate this proposed roundabout, these intersection changes. The county has been working on this roundabout concept and construction of a redo of Jamaica Avenue is anticipated around 2028. The applicant is also proposing an eight-foot-wide trail both on both sides of Ravine Parkway that would connect to existing trail stubs at the waters of Michael's Point, and a sidewalk will be established throughout the neighborhood. So getting more into the trail that is proposed around Lake Robert, the Lake Robert wetland, the city of Cottage Grove's 2040 comprehensive plan does show a recreational trail along Lake Robert and those transportation trails connecting along Ravine Parkway. The trail around the lake is located on multiple outlots of the Lockridge and Waters at Michael's Point developments that will be dedicated to the city for open space, and the developer will be responsible for trail construction. This trail will definitely be a unique feature in the community that goes around the existing lake here. So very exciting to see that. All right, landscaping here. The proposed landscaping meets the code requirements, and it's just of note that a buffer has been proposed along the west side of Jamaica Avenue behind those townhome lots there along the pond at Outlot B there. A neighborhood meeting was held on November 13, 2024, with three property owners in attendance from the Preserve at Cottage Grove Neighborhood, which is down here, south of the site, and one email was received by the developer after that meeting was held. Concerns were related to the park amenities in the new park that is proposed on Outlot G of the preliminary plat, the proposed trail around Lake Robert, and the additional traffic on Jamaica Avenue. So the park will be containing some active park amenities, and the trail around Lake Robert, as noted prior, was proposed in the 2040 comprehensive plan. Previous development approvals for the Waters at Michael's Point did not restrict the development of this trail around the lake. And then also, as noted before, access into the development will be from Jamaica Avenue with the with some turn lanes that need to be constructed on Ravine Parkway and Jamaica Avenue in order to accommodate some additional traffic. All right. With all of that said, the planning is recommended that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the two applications for a rezoning and preliminary plat, subject to the conditions of approval. And representatives from Pulte Homes are also here tonight for any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Rasmussen.
If I'm reading this right, it appears that Ravine Parkway needs to be extended through this development. That portion's not there yet. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is that something the city's handling or the developer handles that development? How does that how does that come together?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I will invite Crystal Raleigh with our engineering staff to come up and answer those questions. Being new to the team, I don't know all the answers quite yet.
Good evening, commissioners. The proposed Ravine Parkway would be designed and constructed by the development team. The city would cost share in that. So the development team would be responsible for constructing our typical roadway section, and then the city would cost share for portions of the roadway above and beyond our standard section. So, you know, the extra width, the medians, et cetera.
So would this extension just be completed till the end of this development right now? Or is it?
That's correct. And then in the future, the Kemp properties to the west of this development, and then as that develops, Ravine would continue to be pushed through to the west.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bott.
As of now, the Jamaica Avenue is actually a single lane on either side, which is on the east of this property. Are there any proposal to make that two lane going forward because of the increased traffic or anticipated increase in traffic?
The Jamaica Avenue, I believe, as is, is designed for that 15,000 vehicles per day. I am not sure what the county's project that's coming in 2028 would entail as far as if, you know, extra lanes are proposed on Jamaica. I think that's still to be determined with their upcoming project.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Britton.
If I recall correctly, Jamaica Avenue from 70th to Military was traditionally a four-lane, two lanes in both directions. Because this property wasn't developable at the time, the curve of the road into the roundabout area that was desired couldn't take place yet. And instead of reconstructing Jamaica when we needed to, it went down to a single lane both ways, with the intent, as far as I'm understanding, it will be two lanes both ways in the future when it becomes appropriate to redo that road, which is not part of this development. But with respect to its history and its future, it's intended to be two lanes both ways eventually as well.
Commissioner Fisher.
Can you explain? So we were talking a little bit about this. The 2040 COM Plan says it's R1, low-density residential, correct, but it's being rezoned to R4 transitional, but it's still meeting low-density requirements. I guess I'm feeling like there's some different things being used interchangeably. And I guess, can you explain that a little bit better and help me understand why those two things are being used interchangeably?
Sure. I will do my best, and I may have to.
That's okay. I think I know why. I think I know why you're doing it, but I also want to hear why you're doing it.
All right, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So the low-density residential classification on the slide that I just pulled up, it definitely has to do with that, you know, number of dwellings per acre and everything. It wasn't to give a specific zoning designation to the lots. It was just to say, you know, this area should have that specific number of dwellings per acre. So the low-density residential that R4, like I mentioned, with the 2.5 or nine units per acre, still fits into the definition of low-density residential as it's defined in the comprehensive plan.
Okay. So when you're counting townhouse units, are those considered, like if it's a four side by side, are those considered four units? Or is that considered one unit?
Those are considered four individual dwelling units.
Separate units. I don't know if my math is just not mathing, but it just doesn't seem to fit the low-density number. I don't know. I just maybe it's just the way that is like the drawing is and how it looks like it feels really packed and dense to me, and I'm not sure why that is.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fisher. So when we calculate density, we use net density, right? So we take out all areas of right-of-way, areas below high water levels. And so in our comprehensive plan, when we think about low density, it's two to four units per acre. So we have a project that's proposed at 2.9, that fits right into that density that's outlined in our comprehensive plan. This particular zoning district was created for the purpose of having that transition and that ability to have a variety of product types and perhaps a site that might have some unique challenges, so that we could find that flexibility to allow for development, but also still meet that density standard.
Any further questions for staff?
I do.
Commissioner Bott.
So it's proposed to be zoned as R4 because of the townhome units. Otherwise, it should have been an R3 if it were if there were just single-family homes in that zone.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bott, that is correct. With those townhome units, that pushes it into the R4 transitional district with those differing densities of dwellings.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Stevens.
I'll try to keep this as far out of engineering as possible. I'm just wondering if you could talk about that stormwater that's coming underneath. There's there's always seemed to be just a pretty significant swale through that property. And I don't think the culvert's all that big, but is there plan? And um, I don't think the culvert's all that big, but is there plans to just reroute? I mean, is it going to be piped or is it going to be overland rerouted down? Has that been discussed at all?
It, uh, Mr. Chair, um, Commissioner Stevens, that has been discussed. I'm assuming, are you talking about the drainage coming from the west side of the property?
From the north side. So there's a culvert under Military.
Okay, so um, it will come into that basin in the northwest corner. And from there, it would be piped down through the subdivision into um the big Pond Three that you're seeing there up on the screen from where then it would discharge into Lake Robert.
Okay, so it's going to go overland behind the townhomes into Pond Two. Is that right?
I believe it's going to be piped.
Piped?
Yeah.
It's it's very high bedrock up there.
Mm-hmm.
So it'll be in Storm Sewer in the streets to either Pond One or Pond Two. Maybe you know offhand, but.
That pipe is not as large.
Okay. Okay, just curious about that. That's all. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? All right, thank you. At this time, the applicant would like to approach the podium and add anything additional.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Haley Daly with Polte Homes of Minnesota. Um, we're at sixteen fifty West Eighty Second Street, Suite three hundred, Bloomington, Minnesota. Um, with me tonight is Dean Lauter, our Director of Land Planning and Entitlement, as well as Mark Roush with Alliant for any of the specific engineering questions. I'm as well as Representative for Rachel Development. Um, I'm here to just answer any questions you may or may not have, and we're just excited to be in the city of Cottage Grove again, so.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicants? Okay, I don't see any, but I am going to ask, I think it was Mark you said was your engineering.
Yes, Mark Roush with the.
Sir, if you would come up. Sorry, you you had just given an answer from the back. I wanted to make sure we had you up here so that people at home can hear and we have it on the record. So if you just give your name.
Mark Roush with Alliant Engineering.
All right, thank you. And then so there was a question from Commissioner Stevens about specifically where the the stormwater ponding or where the stormwater was going, whether it was going over land or whether it was being piped through. Um, if you could just provide your kind of update on what that was.
So there is a pipe, that is correct, that picks up a north side of Military that dumps out here. There's a, it's it's, you can see it. There's a lot of riprap there. It's actually where bedrock is actually physically exposed there. That's, I think that's only twenty one, it's not as big a pipe. This side is what takes a significant amount of flow from Woodbury and Morford to the west of the site, northwest. So that is being captured in this basin. And there's a larger trunk pipe that line pipe that will follow through to this pond here. So we will be collecting this, but right now it's just coming down the hill. We have multiple catch basin units back here to make sure we capture that with the swale easement. Uh, all this common area of the of the townhome area is in drainage and utility easement, so it's an and it's a managed property. So I don't know if that answers the question.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
All right, any further questions for the applicants? All right, thank you very much. At this time, we'll open public hearing on the application. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the application can approach or can approach the podium, state their name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chair, Committee. My name is A.J. Ecker. I live at eighty eight fifty two sixty seventh Street Bay South. Um, we're in the uh Waters at Michael's Point Development. And we're we're excited about this new plan and and getting some some more neighbors. Um, we do have a concern, um, some of us that live at the Waters at Michael's Point along Lake Robert there that when we um kind of went through this process back in two thousand and eleven to develop the Waters at Michael's Point, when we're working with the city, we were assured that a a walking path was not going to go around the south side of the lake. And um, so a lot of us that that built there and and bought there were under that premise that the the walking path would not go around that side of the lake. And um, you know, in addition to just, you know, the commitment we had from the city, you know, knowing um, how the the lake floods, and I know we've put in different drainage there um to help that, but sometimes we've got water halfway up our backyards. You know, we've got neighbors now that have fences there. Um, some of our biggest, most mature trees are, there's 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 not a lot of space between the the property line of their backyards and the the wetland. And so to, I know you talked about maybe an eight foot wide trail going through that space. In in some of the backyards, I I don't even know how that's possible to get eight feet of a managed trail through there without you know, not cutting down some of the most beautiful, mature trees around that around that lake. So I I just uh wanted to voice our concern uh for those of us living on the lake now. Um, that we we would really uh like the city to uphold their agreement with us to to not put the walking trail around that lake. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ecker, can I just ask you? And you don't have to answer it if you don't want to, but um other than the conversations you had with the city back in two thousand and eleven about this path, is there a specific reason why you think that a walking path on the south side of the lake would not be appropriate?
Well, um, I mean, back when we, you know, were, you know, in negotiations with John and Jennifer in the in the city, we we just thought that you know, privacy is one issue. Um, but now, after living there for the last ten years or however long we've been there, it it doesn't seem like the 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 space is there from the from the wetland buffer to the to our um property line. I, there's just not that much space there for an eight foot path to go through there. And um, you know, some of the neighbors' fences, I I believe, are are rightfully in their spot, but it's it it can't be more than fifteen feet from the water, you know, and then there's supposed to be the 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 natural wetland buffer in there. And then we've got these big, beautiful trees, you know, somebody came out and just staked. These stakes go right through our our yards. And you know, some of these huge trees are right in the middle of that. And so I would just, I would hate to see, I mean, it's such a beautiful nature preserve back there to see some of these really longstanding trees get cut down and um, and 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 you you know, I I think it's a beautiful place back there and we're excited about the development. Um, there's going to be, you know, areas to walk around and park dedications all over there. You can still enjoy the lake without having and I and I don't believe the 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 trail can connect all the way around anyways because of the um, somebody on the the other side of the the east side. But but those are some of my thoughts.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Crystal Rogers. I'm um neighbor of A.J.'s, a couple doors down eighty eight forty four sixty seventh Street Bay South. Our home is um on the end of the cul-de-sac in our backyard would butt up right to where this walking path is proposed to be literally literally within a few feet of the fence that we just put in around our swimming pool that we invested in um, the summer after we moved in in twenty twenty one. So my husband and I have been residents of Cottage Grove since two thousand and eleven, lived in a different neighborhood and then moved to this neighborhood largely due to the privacy of the backyard. And um, we were planning to do a swimming pool in our previous location, which was also fairly private, but it but had a huge um hill, which was a which was a problem for for that. So when we found this um place, we fell in love and we said, you know what, this is a really private area, which is kind of why we decided to move there. Um, doing some research at the time, we did actually notice that there was this proposed plan um for a walking path, and we had called the city at the time to confirm if that was or wasn't going to happen. And we were told although on the phone, so I don't have it in writing, but it was um on on the phone, I was uh, I was told that that land was not conducive to a walking path and it wouldn't be happening. So um, we made the investment to move and we've been very happy where we're at and we're quite concerned about the potential walking path that would be literally within a few feet of our private oasis. We don't have another place that we go in the summer like many Minnesotans do to lake homes. This is this is our place. Um, and being a business owner in Cottage Grove for ten years and uh, a practitioner in the area for ten years, we've we've made Cottage Grove our home and we really do like it here and um, we're pretty disappointed that this is potentially gonna gonna come into our backyard. So I'm hoping I can speak on the behalf of my other neighbors that we really would not like to have a walking path right in our backyard. I'm fine with the walking path to the west of our house along our driveway that has already started and going around the west side of the lake. But it really seems to be, you know, encroaching a lot of homes in privacy to be literally within feet of of a backyard that's been private for for that long for many. So thank you.
Thank you.
How's it going? Jason Johnson. I live at eighty seven fourteen sixty seventh Street Court South. Just a few doors down from these guys, especially through the woods there. You know, we start, we moved into the neighborhood in two thousand and seventeen. We heard that there was a potential of a trail that would go through there as well. Uh, we looked into it, called the city, they said, it probably won't happen because of how the house across the um, lake there is um bedrock that will never really ever be developed. Uh, a trail would probably never happen, more than like never was the big word that was used. So we decided to move in there, uh, backyard. We don't actually look at the lake very often. I mean, we can't see it. We've got some trees back there. Uh, so it's not so much the obstruction of the lake, it's people in the backyard. If you've ever spent any time looking at this lake, do some aerial, go back in time, look at some aerial photos of this lake. It's not really even a lake. It's mostly just covered in seaweed. It's got geese on it. Uh, it's it's not super beautiful. In front of their homes, you know, they got a nice little spot there. They can see, you know, the weeds kind of come back into the west southwest corner of there, but uh, it's not a I I just don't think it's a good investment for the city to even have around a lake that isn't a lake. When I came to the meeting, the original meeting with with Polte and stuff, they, I was told by one of the city people that were there, I hate to say this, but we kind of want to be like Woodbury, like Colby Lake. Well, my first thought is there, let's have a Colby Lake first. We don't have that there. So also the water there, have we ever, has that water been tested of any sort? I only ask because our dog has gone back in there a couple times, come back. He's a bit loopy after he gets out of there. It's and it's also, it's it's just not a, it's not super awesome. So it just, I don't know, it just seems like not a real good use of money and privacy. You know, we we paid to have that back there. Now we got people coming in from the other side. If there is a park across the way, coming into our backyards. Our neighborhood is, it's, you know, it's a diamond in the rough. We have a lot of spots. There's not a lot of neighborhoods like ours. And a lot of us move there and love it the way it is. I get that there is change. I support the build across there. Uh, Jamaica is is pretty busy, but I'm sure that the county and the the city will work together to make the lanes a little bit bigger. But uh, basically comes down to, I would like to see the trail itself not constructed due to what we've put into, you know, purchasing this home and the the rest of the neighbors, especially on the south side of sixty seventh street and then the sixty seventh street bay. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Mike Miller, eighty eight sixty sixty seventh Street Bay South. Um, I live right on the south side of the lake, next to A.J. and all these guys. Uh, our little neighborhood is, like people said, it's it's a gem here in Cottage Grove. It's very private. It's very small. We all know each other, uh, and we bought there for the privacy. Uh, so as far as the concern about, you know, how does it impact our community? So there's probably, what, forty five houses in there or whatever. It impacts our privacy. Uh, we paid premium prices for our lots for that privacy. Um, it's also where the trail goes through, uh, that is a wetland. Um, so I don't know if the study has been done, if permission's been allowed. I mean, that has to be approved with the watershed district. Uh, it is very low line. When it rains, even though the drain has been put in, uh, our backyard still floods over. Um, so I'm most concerned about the privacy that we paid a premium for. Uh, we chose to live in Cottage Grove, not to live in Woodbury, right? We have tons of walking paths already. Um, I would prefer not to have a walking path pretty much right through my backyard. We can go around the other side. We can walk out. I mean, our whole neighborhood walks. Um, see these guys all the time out walking dogs and we walk out. The the beautiful path across Jamaica is awesome. We walk the parkway. So there's lots of Woodbury-like amenities in our neighborhood already. Uh, we would str- our whole neighborhood would prefer that the path doesn't go behind our houses. It goes, it can go on the north side. Um, they they haven't bought into the community already that we've lived there for, you know, twelve years, um, living in the privacy and the beauty of nature, even though, like they said, the lake really isn't that beautiful because it's covered with lily pads. Uh, like now is the most beautiful time, and then in the spring before the lily pads show up. So um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, members of the commission, Kevin Summerland. I'm at eighty seven ten sixty seventh Street Court South. Um, also my property abuts the the south side of uh Lake Robert, if in fact you want to call it a lake. Um, as it's been mentioned, it's more of a a swamp. You know, we bought in in that neighborhood in two thousand and thirteen uh from Polte. Um, the representative uh that convinced us to buy there um was uh really selling the privacy aspect of that development. Back then, we were pre Emerald Ashbore infestation and that area was uh certainly, I mean, you couldn't even see the lake uh initially from from where we were our lots. Um, since then, we've had to remove a lot of trees, which has opened that area up a lot. Dodge Nature Center recently has gone in and and done a fair amount of clearing. And so our level of privacy has diminished considerably just over the past, in the last ten years. And uh, yeah, to to now be uh subject to an eight foot trail that uh is going to potentially um bring people in there at all hours and right in our backyard. Um, certainly, there's some safety, security concerns that I would have. Um, I think it's a uh compromise, you know, if Polte wants to have a a trail on that north side of the lake and maybe circle around on the the east and west with little roundabouts there um and just avoiding that southern side of the lake. I I I would have no problem with that, but uh I think, you know, just recognizing as has been mentioned, our our lots, we paid a premium for those lots for that privacy aspect and um, now, a decade or more after we after we closed on those deals, we're uh being asked to give up that privacy. Um, I I think it's just unreasonable. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi there, uh, Commissioners. My name's Nathan Dean. I'm at eighty seven fifteen sixty seventh Street Court South Cottage Grove. One of the things I guess I'm I'm challenged by as I as I take a look at the the plans is, and I think some of the the Commissioners raised it up, is even the 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 density that is being proposed. This is coming from a an area that is very much uh single family homes. Um, and a very tight area of which, you know, I'm I'm raising four girls. And I I can't express to you how much I appreciate the the safety of of being able to raise my my four girls in that cul-de-sac. And I don't have to worry because it is a very private, protected area. And Polte did a phenomenal job of building that that area at the time. And and we are grateful for the 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 privacy and the area that was created. But I'm a little shocked as as we saw these uh proposals being put together at just how much density is being proposed. And I have to ask the question, why? Like, is this the Cottage Grove that we understood that, I mean, that was trying to develop all these single family homes? I mean, the 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 development that was just across um Jamaica there, as it was being built out and had the the single family homes being built into it, that seemed reasonable. I mean, they 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 did that in in a way that seemed very much uh designed. designed around the single-family home. And I guess I'm challenged as to well above the, you know, the walking path, and the walking path is a big issue in our neighborhood. But I'm more concerned about just the fact that this is being zoned at R4 versus R2 that was part of that 2040 plan. I would respectfully request that that be reconsidered, even though I understand there are special circumstances of that land and that the challenge is to develop it. I think still having a lower-density, single-family home mix would not only protect my home values, but it would also protect my neighborhood and keep it, the private, safe neighborhood that I currently reside in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against the proposal?
Hi. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Michael Gortel. I live at 8717 67th Street Court South. And first, I'll say I definitely empathize with my neighbors and the concerns with the trail. It's not my scenario or my situation, but absolutely understand the situation of that. I think the reason I'm here is I just want to call out the concerns with the traffic that's on Jamaica going southbound, especially southbound. So, as noted, probably five, a little bit more years ago, Jamaica was a two-lane in each direction, and that was reconstructed when the roundabout on Jamaica and 70th was put in. To the most part, single lane in each direction, some accommodations for the new ravine parkway going eastbound, as well as the development to the east of Jamaica. What that accounted for was some extra turn lanes and things of that sort. But where my concern comes in is ensuring that there's some sort of road reconstruction on Jamaica, at least in between Military and I'd say 67th Street Court. That's the area, these, what I experienced, remember, is coming southbound from Military to 67th on Jamaica is there is not a turn lane for folks to go right into 67th Street Court South. And that traffic comes up behind you quite quickly. And where my concern comes in is, as there's more traffic and additional houses, naturally, there come, you know, more cars and things of that sort. So, I'd be looking for additional, at least some road enhancements and things of that sort, so I don't get rear-ended. You know, as I'm trying to slow down and take a right into 67th Street, or I start turning my blinker on up on Military, just to make sure everyone knows I'm turning right a half mile down the road. So, just awareness on that with the way the road is currently constructed. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against the proposal? All right. Seeing none, we will close. Public comment then. At this time, I will ask staff to kind of respond to some of the concerns and some of the things that I know they've had on their radar since the neighborhood meeting where specifically the trail's been brought up. But Samantha, do you have?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. So, yes, staff has definitely heard and, you know, understands the public's concerns regarding the privacy, the trail and everything. You know, it was in the 2040 comprehensive plan, as I noted, and also kind of speaking to those discussions, packets, approvals, things like that, that went on around 2011, 2007-ish, when these other developments to the south were put in. As was, you know, nothing was put on the record as far as like conditions or things like that, that would hold the city into saying that no trail would be put here. Staff did considerable amounts of research on that front, as far as verifying that that would or would not be the case. Let's see here. As far as, you know, mitigating any wetland impacts, things like that, of course, permits, appropriate permits, minimizing impacts to wetlands are going to be required, very important things, permits through things like the DNR, things like that for trail construction. And staff is looking at, you know, varying ways of trail construction and things like that with the applicants, engineers, as far as, you know, best practices, minimal impacts to those areas. Let's see here. Concerns regarding the density, kind of getting to Commissioner Fisher's question earlier about the net density of the area, you know, the area, as I mentioned, was, it was not said that this area would be zoned R2. It's a density, it's an overall net density that the area is planned for, and this proposal does meet that request using the townhome density and the single-family density on these acreage, when we subtract the acreage of public rights of way and wetland, the wetland-like. Let's see here. Kind of going into the traffic concerns and everything, that was also kind of mentioned during the presentation as well about the proposed, hopeful reconstruct in 2028. It was also noted in the packet that the county, this is a county road, and it was reconstructed as the neighbors had mentioned. And it was reconstructed in a way that the county knew that they would need to be coming back here for reconstruction sooner rather than later, as far as when new development came in, things like that. So, those will definitely be considerations as the county continues to go forward in their planning processes. Kind of send it back to you, unless there's any other questions.
Sure. Commissioner Fisher.
I have a question. So, I'm empathizing with everybody on the trail, and something that was said really kind of struck me, like it doesn't seem like a very good use of money or space. Another thing that was talked about was lots of big trees that were going to need to be mitigated. Can you talk about how many trees you would have to take down and what that would look like back there? Because it doesn't seem, to me, that makes sense. That doesn't seem to be a great, like, use of money and space. You know, if you're taking down a bunch of big, mature trees and putting a path somewhere that floods all the time anyway.
For sure.
That made sense to me, so.
Yes. Chair and Commissioner Fisher, I can speak to that. Some of the neighbors expressed concerns about the amount of space between the rear yards and the water's edge. Staff, the developer, went together out there, the developers, engineer, to take a peek at those backyards and possible trail locations within that corridor. Backyard lot corners were staked, and in the narrowest location, there's approximately 50 feet between the back lot corner and the water's edge. That does allow some flexibility to avoid big backyard trees. So, the anticipation is that the trail can avoid some of those large trees that are in people's rear yards. Now, the trail does meander through the woods, and then there are some larger trees in the woods that can't be avoided. But generally, those bigger trees through backyards would be avoided.
Is there, go, no, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, like, I feel like, I feel like there should be some sort of compromise here with the trail. Like, I understand, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not one to, like, be swayed, but I feel like there's, there's got to be some sort of, it sounds like consistently, all of these people were told in the past by people that there was never going to be a trail there, which I know it's not in writing, but it, I mean, it's consistent that every single person has said that. The fact that, you know, just environmental, the fact that it floods, like, I just, I don't see this being a hill to die on. There's got to be some way that we can make some sort of compromise on this piece of it, because it doesn't really affect the homes going in. It doesn't affect the density. It doesn't affect, you know, the overall, like, construction of the development. So, I guess I would like to see some sort of compromise here.
Sure. Understood. I think the intention with this was to follow that comp plan that showed us having a trail all the way around Lake Robert. So, that does generate that trail on the south side there.
Yeah.
So.
The comp plan does, though, show that this parcel should be zoned R1 as well, and we're going R4 because there's some similarities. So, I think the comp plan is, is great, but there's some movement that can happen with it, and I think maybe we can consider that here, too. So.
So, I guess, and maybe I can, because I'm confused now, too, I think. Because, so, my understanding of the comp plan is we don't talk about zoning districts R1, EG, I2. It's just in terms of density. And so, the comp plan right now in this area is saying it should be used as low-density residential when it develops, correct?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that's correct.
And low-density residential is according to the comp plan definition is between two and four units per acre.
That's correct.
All right. And so, then we go separately to the zoning, and zoning can be R1 through our, we have through R4 right now for residential? Or six? Okay. So, we have six different zone, residential zonings right now in the zoning code.
That's correct.
And some of those fall within two to four units per acre, and some of them are higher than two to four units per acre.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that's correct.
And so, when we're looking at the comp plan versus the zoning map, those two things are different.
Right.
And the low-density residential guided use doesn't necessarily match up with R1, R2. It can fall within a couple different of those zoning districts.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that's correct. Those zoning districts will have standards that have to be met as it relates to product type that's permitted within those zoning districts.
Okay. So, the R4.
Understood.
The R4 zone.
I read it wrong.
Okay. Falls, and I just want to make sure everyone's clear.
I hear you.
I just want to make sure everyone's clear, because there was a, there was a comment about, you know, the amount of density in this area, and it's kind of, it's greater than what it is in surrounding. But that's still, the R4 is still going to fall within the city's definition of this is low-density residential.
Right.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page here.
Yep.
So, Crystal, I was going to ask you then, if I can go back to, because I was going to have a similar question to Commissioner Fisher about where the trail was going to be in relation to the property lines for these homes that are on the south side. Because I understand that there's been no development to the north of these homes since these houses were put in in 2011. And so, people may not know exactly where their property line is. They may think it goes all the way up to, close to the water edge. But it sounds like that's not necessarily the case, and it's between the back property line and the water is about 50 feet.
Commissioner Fisher, or, no, chair, yes, that's correct. There is approximately 50 feet behind the actual lot corner to the water at the skinniest point. I mean, that's the, that's the narrowest area. We did find that, you know, mowed lawns and maintained lawns are happening past property lines back there. But the actual property that this Outlet A would be has approximately 50 feet at its narrowest point between those back corners and the water.
Okay. And this may not be a question for you. It may be a question for one of the planners. But do we have a setback requirement for a trail when it's budding up to a residential property? I'm sorry. I'm not trying to play stump the planner, because I know I'm not supposed to do that.
Good question, Mr. Chair. We do not have any sort of setback from, you know, property lines for a trail of that type.
All right. Do we know what the setback is that this plan is kind of setting to right now? How far away are we from the property line, just kind of an average?
Generally, I would say that 15 feet at the closest from, I'm just judging on some of these schematics that I've seen in the plan tonight. I don't have a scale with me to measure off my plan sheet. But I would say there's, you know, 15 feet where we're the closest. But again, if we dug into the packet and pulled out a scale, we could get that a little more exact.
Okay. And I'm not, I'm not looking for you to be exact. My concern is this. These people have come tonight, and they're concerned about their privacy, you know, in these backyards. And as I said, I don't think it's uncommon or would be unexpected for these people to believe that their property lines maybe went further back than they actually do. And the city's gone out there and staked them and said, here's where the actual property line is. And so, we are building, proposing to build this trail on what will be city property. And so, the city kind of gets to decide what it wants to do with its property. But we want to make sure we're not bothering the neighboring use. And so, that's why I'm just kind of looking at, okay, how far away are we from the property? Is it going to, you know, injure their use to it within reason? Because it is city property that we're going to put this on. Fair?
Yes, Mr. Chair. That's fair.
Okay. All right. Any further questions?
I have a question. Kind of tapping into what Jessica had talked about, about kind of compromise. I know there's potential area there, like for boardwalks. Would that be something the city and Pulte would be interested in, like, building a boardwalk through that area so it wouldn't go, like, around, like Walter, but just kind of on top of it?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Knabel, yes, that is something that is being entertained, is the potential for boardwalks as sections of this trail. That's still being talked about with those design decisions.
Would it be conversation to have the whole path like that?
I mean, there can always be conversation of that. The, costs associated with boardwalks or water like that are typically pretty, pretty high in comparison to an asphalt trail. But that's not to say that it can't be done. But yeah, those types of design decisions are still being considered.
Commissioner Bott.
So, the proposed trail is actually extending out of that Outlet A, right? I mean, if you look at the map of the proposed trail.
Extending out of the?
Outlet A or Watershead, Michael's point.
That's correct.
So, the area between Outlet A and the property line of the 67th Street Court area, is that city property? Or what is that? Or is it Dodge Nature Center there?
Members of the commission, Commissioner Bott, that area that is proposed as Outlet A is currently owned by the Walters Dorfs. But as, when it becomes Outlet A, then it would then be owned by the city? Is that what you're asking?
My question is, the, the south of Outlet A and the back of the property line there, the black line there, that small rectangular section?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bott, so that sliver of property is already owned by the city. It was deeded as a part of previous development.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brennan.
Is there any efforts going into, you know, I'm assuming this is the preliminary plat, and you talked about boardwalks may go here, there, different parts of the trail, so it's not 100% plan that's finished. But in the event that this goes through here as you're proposing, is there going to be any mitigation in the landscaping plan for all of this between the trail and the homes that currently exist there?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Britton, the landscaping plan, again, is something that is still under review and still being considered. I don't know, and maybe Sam, you know, that if the trees are intended on both sides of the trail at this point through that area?
Not that I'm, not that I can recall, however, however, like Crystal mentioned, the plan is very much still in flux as far as landscape is a big thing that, of course, it, of course, does not show it. I would, I would say this landscaping is something that is very much still under discussions with the city and staff as far as what is going to be done. And that's also something that could be, of course, subject to change, subject to discussions between staff, the developer, all of that lovely stuff.
Well, I would, I would hope that the homeowners that are there would be involved in that discussion as well, because this is a pretty drastic change to that area. And, you know, the way that it's been for a long time. I know there's no guarantees when something's undeveloped at what's going to eventually happen there. I know that, I don't recall a plan in the past where they were putting a trail through. where they were putting a trail through there. There was challenges, but every time a new development comes through, the entire plan changes. So you really can't look at a plan by plan basis and say, yes, that was going to happen or no, that wasn't. Um, but I would hope that the homeowners would be involved in the placement of that trail, how close it is coming to the property lines, um, and what type of mitigation that can happen there with respect to landscaping or other aesthetics to, to help minimize that impact.
Any further questions for staff? Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a, a question per se, but just talking about the mitigation. So I typically am a, a proponent of trails and connections and connectivity. Um, however, I would say, so just reviewing all of this and the early, early plans, stormwater, I know nobody here is probably that excited about the stormwater, but this is a really large tributary area to that lake. And everybody here has mentioned the quality of the lake. Um, and it also was in the report that this development is bouncing that water level by half a foot in the lake and that that needs to be, I think, brought back down so that it's not an issue for the residents. Um, I think just in terms of the trail around the lake, it seems like there, it's kind of like maybe piling. So you're, you're increasing the water level of the lake, you're adding in a trail, you're adding all these homes. I think it would be really nice if instead it was just sort of a consideration that you're actually enhancing the quality of the lake, keeping that water level as it is. Um, and if the trails are contributing negatively to that, maybe that's something to consider as well. If, if there's a way around some of these other things that were in the report. That's all. It's just not a question, I guess. It's just my notes for the record.
All right, thank you. Do we have any, any other questions for staff or can I let them take their seats? Commissioner Bott?
So why did the, uh, the proposal come with the town home? I mean, is what, does it make this plan viable only if there are townhomes in the pla- in the plat? In the, in the development? I mean, my question is why not go with all single family homes? Why include townhomes? What, what sense does it, um, or what, what value does it add to?
Sure. So I'll, I'll speak to that just from kind of for the city's overall cause planning idea. And then I think, um, Ms. Daly would be willing to come up and provide some better statement from the developer side, of course, because we're kind of two separate entities. Uh, from the city's standpoint, you know, we do, Cottage Grove is looking for and needs, you know, diverse housing types, diverse housing, um, of differing, you know, costs and affordability. Um, you know, just the single family homes in every single neighborhood isn't, you know, it's a, I could stand up here and talk for hours, um, about the, you know, the housing needs of the city of Cottage Grove and things like that. Um, so the townhomes are definitely providing a different type of product for a different home buyer, uh, someone who is looking for something, something different than just a traditional single family home. Um, but I will invite Ms. Daly up as well to speak to you about things from the other, the other side of things.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Um, yes, as Sam mentioned, we, as Polte, put in a lot of thought into what could potentially work, um, on this site. And as it's been mentioned, we, um, are following the R4 codes, but they also, there's a need for this type of housing product. We have a whole, um, market research team that, um, does a lot of analytics and determine what exactly, um, we feel could, the market could support. And in this particular location, um, we determined that we feel that, um, townhomes as well as the single family product that we have could meet different buyers at different stages in their life cycle within Cottage Grove.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for staff or the applicants? All right. Uh, any further discussion on the proposal? If no one else wants to start, I can start.
You can start.
Um, okay. So first off, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Um, I, I know most of you probably haven't been to one of these meetings before. Um, so you haven't heard my spiel about how this is the most important form of government, um, because this is the one that's going to directly impact your lives and you all just talked about it. Um, this is something that is potentially going to go right in your backyard. These are going to be your new neighbors. And so you, um, came out tonight to let us know your feelings about that. And I want to thank you for doing that. Um, after tonight, please feel free to come back because every time we have people from the community who are not involved in these projects come and give their advice and give their feedback, we find something that all of us have missed. And that's what makes this process better is if people are willing to come out, help us look at things, give their advice. So first off, I want to say thank you for that. Um, second, so I talked a little bit and a couple of my questions were about where the property line is, whose property is this, is this, um, trail going to go on? Because that matters, right? If you bought a piece of property, you can't tell your neighbor what to do with their property. And that's kind of part of what's happening here. The city under this proposal is going to own this part of the lake. And so they get to kind of do what they want with their property within reason. If you wanted to buy that property and do what you wanted to do with it, you have the option to do that, but you can't tell your neighbor what to do with it. Now, I think we're all cognizant that this is the city doing it. And so we want to make sure that it's fair to you. Um, but I think the proposals of, well, we want just the privacy that we bought back in 2011, nobody else gets that, right? Somebody else buys a home in a vacant farm lot and they don't buy all the properties next to them. They can't control what's going to happen next to them. And that's what's happening here. So I think we do want to be cognizant of the fact that this is the city that's going to put in a piece of, of trail, um, because we should be held to a higher standard than just a normal property owner. Um, but as you heard, the planning or the comprehensive plan says that there's a trail there. It's been planned at least for the past, when did we do the 2040 plan? Five years ago, six years ago, nine years ago, 10 years ago? So at least 10 years ago, this, this trail has been in the, in the guiding document that's been approved by all of the other surrounding communities, has been approved by Met Council as this is the plan is what's going to happen with the city of Cottage Grove when this property gets developed. Um, and we are bound by the, 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 um, uh, comprehensive plan. We can't deviate from the comprehensive plan because it would be a violation of the law to do so. And so I think, you know, we have to honor that and what we've said, this is what's going to be the plan. But like I said, at the same time, we need to be cognizant of everyone who's here and saying, can we change this? Can we alter this? Can we make sure it doesn't have a giant impact on our lives? It's going to impact you, but let's try to make it as best as we can. So I guess that's where I'm coming from. That's why I wanted to know how far away we are from the property lines that we're making sure we can give people who have, um, their homes there, who haven't been planning on this going in there, um, so they don't have people just kind of waltzing through their backyards. I think that's kind of some of the, the thoughts that Commissioner Britton, Commissioner Fisher, were bringing up as well as, um, you know, let's look at the landscaping plan to maybe put, I don't know if you can put a berm in there or put some kind of extra landscaping in there to kind of separate, uh, the trail from, uh, the, the backyards. And so that's, I think, kind of where I'm landing on this is I'd like to see more work from the city and, and I think to the extent that Polte is involved in the trail at all, um, some kind of more work on that kind of front, um, to make this the least disruptive as possible, knowing that we're required to do this by the comprehensive plan.
My turn.
Commissioner Fisher?
Uh, first of all, I'd like to apologize for misinterpreting the zoning codes. I apologize. Did not mean to be snarky. Um, I agree with you in that this is city owned property and the city should be able to do what they want with it. However, uh, this trail does not impact the development of these homes. This trail does not impact the rerouting of Ravine Parkway. This trail does not impact the meat and potatoes of this, this application. Like we have, we're talking about a trail on the very southern edge of a big fat development. And it just is not, to me, it's not a hill to die on. I think we need to find a compromise because it's not, it's just not the meat of this application. Um, I think there's been enough concern raised with, um, with what you said about the water level coming up because of where the development is and how the watershed works. And I don't understand all that because I am a Realtor, not an engineer, but, um, there is real concern there and just hearing these, these people say that they experience flooding all the time and that there are big, you know, trees back there. It just doesn't seem like an efficient use of city dollars to make a trail somewhere where there probably shouldn't be one. So that's my opinion on it. I just, I think that the development's great. I mean, I feel like it's a little more dense than it should be, but that's just me. Um, I think it's great to have life cycle housing, to have multiple options for people. I, I like that all of these people said that they are excited about new neighbors. To me, that says a lot about, you know, their community and that they're not against the development, um, which is really encouraging to me. But this, this trail is not the hill to die on with this application. Okay, bye.
Thank you. Commissioner Brennan?
Yeah, I agree with, I mean, the, to, to start with the density, if you take a look to the west, you've got quad homes. Um, there's, there's a lot of varying density out to the west of this, and then it bleeds into the single family larger lots out to the east. So, you know, this is a natural transition, you know, from higher density to a little bit medium to low. Um, so that particular point of it is, is I see fitting within the comprehensive plan. You know, I know that you mentioned that the trail was in the comprehensive plan and it may have been in the, I, I, I totally believe you that you say that, that it's in there. I don't recall it from previous comprehensive plans. And I am concerned, especially with the comments, you know, um, from Commissioner Stevens and your knowledge in the South watershed, South Washington County watershed, that and the neighbors' comments on the flood, the, the water level's rising. We would want to make sure that if we did put a trail in here, that it wasn't affected by flooding or something that is going to compromise the trail over time, because then it's just a waste of money. So if we could do our due diligence there as well, I know you guys do a great job of digging into the details, but to make sure that we're not putting, um, the trail right up next to the, the property owner's yards, just to get it away from the pond because we think it's going to flood. Um, cause you can exit into the neighborhood, go through the street and back in, there's already a planned trail excursion to get around those houses. Um, so I really want to see that looked into hard, um, that this would be a sustainable thing. Um, from the city's perspective, I'm sure there's some type of parks and recs component here that planning has gone into at whether they feel that we need a trail or something along those lines. So I, I don't think this is from the city's perspective just based on this development, but from the, the total perspective of our parks and trail systems. Um, but you know, I, from the past, I know there was concerns about building something back there. So we just need to be real careful that if we are going to build something, that it's something sustainable, uh, and isn't going to cause problems. And if it does get built, that there should be some mitigation, you know, aesthetically wise, you know, don't put it up right next to the property owner's homes. And I know we've done it on lots of applications in the past where there's screening, extra screening that's done, uh, in order to mitigate things along those lines so that there's a balance between the overall public at large and the homeowners that are living there. So.
All right, thank you. Any further comments, discussion? Okay, seeing none. Guess I'd look for someone to make a motion then. Don't all talk at once.
How would we make a motion if we want to, if we wanted to be contingent on them figuring out a compromise on the trail?
So.
Like how do we?
So here's like, here's I guess my, my thought on that is, do you want to give, are you asking to give the city and Polte more time to look at this before we decide on it? Or?
I guess I was going back and referring to the conditions of approval to see if there's one in particular we can strike or we can ask for, that's all. I'm just trying to read as fast as I can. Is there, is somebody, can somebody help me like find where that trail is referenced in the conditions or?
So, uh, Commissioner Fisher, I do know the trail is referencing, uh, under construction and greatest condition number 11.
Okay.
Uh, it says that the developer shall be responsible for constructing the trail segment around Lake Robert, uh, and continues on regarding the, uh, personal property encroachments on outlot A.
Okay. So I guess, I don't know how to like word it with just striking that or, I don't know. Does anybody, can somebody help me so I don't look so stupid?
So are you, you wanting to just get rid of the trail?
I mean. Well, so there's pieces of the trail I think that are okay.
Yeah.
Around the north part and around the, maybe the east side and then connecting to the sidewalk that's our, I mean, I don't know. I guess I don't know how to word it. I don't think that there should be a trail between the homes and the, the pond, whatever lake. I just don't think it's efficient.
You could change, you could, in your recommendation, you can recommend changing that particular recommendation within the recommendations.
Well, right. That's what I'm trying to.
To exclude the trail going behind those homes. That is something that you can do as, as you are the one making the motion. So you.
I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out how that's worded appropriately.
Well, you could, as simple as you said, you could say approval subject to the conditions in the staff report excluding with the modification of item number 11 to exclude the trail going behind the homes on the, what is that, the north side of the property?
Okay. What, what Ken said. I will make a motion to approve the application for the, it's not a planned unit development. It's a preliminary plat and the zoning amendment, changing it from AD2 to R4, which is not R1. Uh, subject to the stipulations in the staff report with the exception of number 11.
Modifying number 11.
I want to modify number 11 to edit the trail so that there is no trail between those residential homes on the south edge and the lake.
Okay. I think that's good enough for.
Other.
At least staff to be able to jot down what the.
Other pieces of the trail I think are reasonable, but that piece I do not think is reasonable.
Okay. So we have a motion from Commissioner Fisher to, um, approve the two, uh, plat, or the zoning amendment and the preliminary plat, changing condition number 11, um, to not allow the trail, um, to go behind the properties on the south side of.
It'd be 67th, 67th Avenue, Street.
Streetway South.
Avenue Cove, Street Lane South.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's the motion. Is there a second to that motion?
One second.
All right. I have a second from Commissioner Britten, or Britton, excuse me. Do I have any further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Asmuson?
I guess I, I just feel that this trail would be a, a pretty beneficial to the community, including myself. I don't live in the area, but I'd, I'd love to take advantage of a, a trail around a nice lake, uh, maybe not so nice through the woods, um, ride my bike on it. Um, you know, if, if the trail is possible to be constructed there and it's not interfering with, with, with the water or the property lines, I just feel it would be a shame to bring it two thirds of the way around the lake and then maybe just dead end it there. Or are we routing people now in front of your houses? Is, is that a better scenario to, to come take the, uh, you know, the sidewalk in front of the house maybe? But, uh, I, I just, if it's possible and it makes sense and it can be done, I, I feel it would be a nice amenity for everybody in town is my thought.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Stevens?
I would just say that I agree. I think the trail's a great amenity and this is an opportunity for the city to install the trail without, right, because the developer installs it, correct? Um, I think that if it goes, I mean, it seems like a really good opportunity to just go in front of the homes and then connect back with the lake. But I do think that anybody who likes to go for a walk or a jog, you want a loop. You don't want to go halfway and then turn around and go halfway again and keep bouncing back and forth until you hit your like 5K, right? Um, so I'm in favor of the connection, just not, it doesn't, to me, it's not like, I don't know. I don't think it should be removed. I think it should be a full connected loop. Um, so that's just my two cents, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Knabel?
So if we're doing that path, I think it needs to be a full path as well.
So if we're doing that path, I think it needs to be a full path as well. I don't think you can just have it stop and go a different direction. I would just say, you know, with the city owning it, I think, Evan, you said that, but they will do a better job of working with, I think, the residents of what it looks like. So.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just, yeah, I'll just add that maybe we should explore the option of having a boardwalk or something along those lines, so that we can have a complete path, but instead of being on an area where it's going to be flood-prone, maybe we should explore a boardwalk or something along those lines.
Any further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Stevens.
Could we consider, like, modifying the motion so that it doesn't just cut out that piece, but it just looks at alternative options?
So you can move to amend her motion?
Okay.
And she can decide if she wants to agree to it or not.
I appreciate the thought of having a loop. Not being a runner myself, I wouldn't care if it wasn't a loop. I mean, there are lots of places that, you know, you have a trail. I think of one of my favorite spots in Hamlet Park that goes, and there's a beautiful bench, and it's a dead end, and you sit at that beautiful bench, and I have one of my favorite pictures of my kids sitting on that bench. You know what I mean? Like, I think that there's opportunity to use the space without it going in between those houses right there. I don't know. I don't, I, if you guys want to do the loop, like, fine, I'll amend the motion, then it needs to go in front of those houses. But I don't, I don't think, I mean, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't matter that much.
And I guess, and I guess this was a point I was going to want to clarify anyways, because my understanding of your motion was just that the path, that the trail wasn't going to go behind the houses.
Right.
So technically, that motion means the city could still build it up to the existing sidewalk and around.
Right.
That doesn't, that's not precluded by your motion.
No.
Your motion was just that the trail would not go into the backyards of these houses.
Correct.
So that is the motion right now, is that basically the city's and the developer is not going to build the trail on the north edge of the property line of the 67, Street Bay South.
Street Bay South.
Property. So they, there are other opportunities that are not precluded by Commissioner Fisher's motion, at least my understanding.
Right, no.
It's just that they would not go to the north side of those properties. Is everyone clear?
Correct, yes.
Okay. That solve your concern, or you still want to make an amendment?
I think I'm good.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion, though? We had that clarification. Thank you for all of you forbearing with us while we do math at the table.
Sorry, I just didn't want to, like, say it wrong.
Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I will call for a vote, then. All those in favor for the motion, as stated, to approve the zoning amendment and preliminary plat, amending condition number 11 to not allow the trail to be, to run along the north side of the properties on 67 Bay.
Avenue Bay South.
Street Court.
Street Court.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all those opposed, say no.
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 All right. So I have nos from Knabel, Frazier, Rasmussen, and Stevens, and so that fails.
Does that include 67 Street Court, son? Just Avenue Bay South, and there are.
Sure, I apologize. It was all of the properties on that side.
All the properties.
Yes.
So that proposal fails.
Okay. This time, any further discussion? Otherwise, I'll look for another motion.
Can we go with the, I mean, go with this motion, but the modification for item number 11 would be that the city would take a fresh look at it and then come to a compromise solution, which would perhaps retain the trail, but it won't be right behind the property line of the 67th Bay South.
Okay. So I guess I'd be looking for kind of some more definite language, then, because ideally, what's going to happen is this language is going to go to city council. They would take our recommendation, and then city staff and the developer would have to put it into practice. And so we have to have some definite language as to what we want this to look like, I guess. If your request is, we just want you to go back to the drawing board, then I think that's a different discussion we can have. I don't know that staff loves that idea, but Emily, do you want to chime in?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I was just going to reference, there's been some conversation about boardwalk, and so we are entertaining boardwalk options in several segments of the trail to avoid impact where we can for that paved trail. I think it's very important to reference, you know, costs. I think there was one idea about, is that whole southerly section a boardwalk that pushes the trail into the water? I would just caution that cost associated with that type of trail as an option.
Any further discussion?
I just don't like the language of being stricken out completely.
Okay.
Well, that's not, it wasn't stricken out completely.
Well, I think, I think the ask was that we, the city doesn't do the trail at all, or they do the connections in the front and take out that part, but I think that part needs to stay in.
So would you like to see it pass just as recommended?
As is, and see the city stand up and do what they think is right with that.
Okay.
Piece.
So is that a motion, then, or are you just discussing?
I will, I will put in a motion to approve the zoning amendment to change AG2 to R4 and the preliminary plat.
Okay. Subject to stipulations in the staff report. As written. All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Knabel. Do I need a second at this point?
No, second.
Second for Commissioner Rasmussen. Any further discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none. At this time, I'll call a vote on this motion, then. All those in favor of Commissioner Knabel's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, I have nos, then, from Bott, Britton, and Fisher. Okay, so it passes four to three. Item seven tonight is approval of the minutes. A is approval of Planning Commission minutes from December 16th of 2024. If there are any additions or corrections to those minutes, otherwise I would look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Fisher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Stevens. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight tonight is reports. A is recap of January 8th and January 22nd city council meetings.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, heading all the way back to January 8th, just after the new year, first and foremost, we did oath of office for our new council members or re-elected council members, Mr. Olson being one of those. We also, the council approved the interim conditional use permit, that was before you in December, for the continuation of the operations at Ideal Avenue for the storage of tractor trailers out there, so council did approve that. And then heading to the January 22nd meeting, there were no items of note that I would note for the council, or, excuse me, for the Planning Commission, I was thinking about just passing it off to Councilmember Olson here if he had anything to add for you this evening.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. First of all, I'm very grateful to be here with you all tonight. As you know, each year, when the city council is read adjourned in January, the mayor makes recommendations on various liaisons for various commissions, and this year, one of his recommendations was to have me work with the Planning Commission, and I haven't had that opportunity in a few years, so I'm very excited for that. Thanks for having me. Also, I want to thank you all for your service. I know that for, I think, at least one, maybe, we're getting to the end of a term, is that right? So who are we losing? Anyone? Are you all good till next year? Oh, okay.
Commissioner Rasmussen, I believe Commissioner Rasmussen's.
Yeah, so February, you know, February is when terms kind of start and expire, so there'll be a little bit of turnover on all of the various city commissions. If you have a desire to continue serving and you've termed out, I think Ken's been through this about 12 times, something like that, if you term out, you wait for a year, and then you can reapply for any commission, including the one that you currently serve on. So please give that some thought, because as a council, we put a lot of faith in what you bring to us as advice on all of the various issues that you deal with, including challenging issues like the one that you had to deal with this evening. We did just have our annual strategic planning session. For those of you who don't know what that is, each year in January, the city council and staff get together for a full day Saturday, it's usually about 7:30 to 5:00, give or take, where we look at our strategic objectives for the past and decide if we want to carry those forward into, you know, current time and then into the future. We also look back at, you know, what have we accomplished tactically with respect to those objectives? And what do we want to do next? And how do we want to approach that? So it's a really heavy mental lifting day, but it's a fun day. It's a really good day to kind of dream a little bit, get some ideas out there, and I think you'll find that we have some really neat things on tap this year that we are going to be working towards. Of course, we're all very excited about access to the Mississippi River down at the new park. That'll be something fun that we'll be working on. We've got the Kingston Park building and the electrical getting upgraded in the next couple of years, electrical this year, building next year. We also have, you know, all of our new water treatment plants coming online, so the low-zone plant is about done, and the high-zone plant will get started here this year. You know, there's some things going on with Olson that I'm sure you guys all know about, and their desire to maybe expand their operation and do some things differently, so we'll have to give that consideration. So it's going to be a busy year. It always seems to go by so stinking fast, and of course, it all comes down to the budget. And it seems like we never stop talking about the budget. We do budget every two years, but even at the strategic planning session, you know, everything has to tie back to, is it in our capital improvement plan? Is it something that we've been saving for? Do we have funding? What kind of third-party funding can we find, et cetera? So one of the things I like to do as the liaison to whatever commission I'm working with is I like to be very transparent. I like to, you know, open up the floor for you to ask any questions you may have about anything that's going on in the city, and provided I'm not, you know, limited by an NDA or something like that, you know, I'm always happy to share and try to answer questions to the best of my ability. Keep in mind, I'm a council member. There's five of us, and, you know, we act as a body. So if there's something that you ask me, and it's an opinion, I'll tell you it's an opinion, because I can't speak for the body. But, you know, definitely very grateful to have been re-elected this last year, and I look forward to four more years of serving the citizens of Cottage Grove to the very best of my ability. And with that, I'll turn it back to you if you have any questions for me.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Olson? I don't see any. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, and I'm always available. Please feel free to reach out anytime.
All right. B tonight was response to Planning Commission inquiries. We didn't have any from last meeting. C, Planning Commission requests. Any requests for staff for the next meeting? Councilmember Bott.
So during the discussions today, we have had several questions on the Jamaica Avenue improvement, going from one lane to two lanes on either side. Can we get some more information on that? Is that something that was discussed in some of those meetings or with the council?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bott, we can follow up with some more details of the county's plan for 2028 and where they're at in their planning process.
Thank you.
In regards to that, in regards to that, is Jamaica going to be a city road? Are they turning that over to us? I heard some rumblings of.
Yeah, yeah. The expectation is that once that road is fully reconstructed, the city will take ownership.
So it's just a matter of time.
Theoretically, yes.
Okay.
All right. Any other requests for staff? All right, seeing none. Before I ask for motion to adjourn, I do just want to thank everyone, staff, and on commission tonight. I know these meetings are not easy, and I think this is probably one of the only meetings in a while, especially that we've had not unanimous decisions on a motion. So I want to thank everyone for being cordial about it and being intentional about their discussion on it. Like I told everyone who was here tonight, it makes the decision better in the end if we all can have an honest opinion in respect to what we're all saying. So I want to thank everyone who's left in the room here tonight for working on this project, and hopefully it will go very smoothly and everyone will be happy with it. With that being said, item nine is adjournment. I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from Commissioner Rasmussen. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Knabel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero.